Good evening. The time is now 7:00 PM. We're about to get started. Mr. Dial is coming in right behind us, so I'm trying to stall for him.
Hey, there he is.
Looking nice this evening. Very PHS jacket.
Thank you, Bill.
Sorry, it's just having a nice moment here.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Today is Monday, August 28th, 2023, and it is 7:00 PM. Actually, 7:01. The meeting of the Prosper Independent School District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Representing the quorum this evening, Mr. Dial, Mrs. Dixon, Mr. Beavers, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Linker, and Mr. Van Wolf. I will open this up in prayer. Would you please join me? Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. Thank you for everything you've given us. Just thank you for this time that we can come together and talk about our wonderful district. Father, as we get into the fall now and students are starting to dig in to the education side, I just pray that you would give them a good semester. Pray that you would keep them safe, both in the classroom and all the different extracurricular activities that are going on right now. Just give them an awesome semester. Father, we also lift up our teachers, administrators, all the employees of the district, that you would just give them a sense of peace and calm when they walk into our building so that they can be the best possible people for our students. And Father, we also pray right now, just this evening, for the board that you would give us wisdom and discernment as we look at the different issues that are laid out tonight. Father, forgive us for when we fall short. Thank you so much for loving us and for sending us your Son Jesus to die on the cross for us, Lord. And it's in His name and because of Him that we pray to you. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the heart of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Van Wolf, would you please read the board vision this evening?
Be glad to. The board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Perfect. Thank you. Let's see here. We have some dates coming up. I've got those on the screen for everybody. And this evening, hey, we've got some celebrations again.
Yes, we do. And this one's been a long time coming. I believe we got notification of this back in May. And so Mr. Geiger, if you'll come forward, he is with us this evening, and he is the recipient of the Seidel Chapter Dallas Teacher of the Year Award, has been nominated for the National Teacher of the Year for the Air and Space Forces Association. Mr. Hamer is actually with us tonight. Mr. Hamer, we are glad that you're here, and it looks like you maybe have some things to read there that you might just say. We'd love for you to do that. Thanks for coming.
We have some things for Dan and what I want to talk about. Us and Dan. Okay. Hi, I'm Rick Hamer, and I'm from the Dallas Area Seidel Chapter of the Air and Space Forces Association. It's hard for me to say because space just came onboard. We're also known as AFA. I also serve as the Vice President of Education for AFA Texas. AFA was founded in 1946 by Jimmy Doolittle of the Doolittle Raiders fame, and he did that to promote the dominant United States Air Force because remember, the Air Force was just getting started then, and to provide sponsorship for educational programs for the development of air power and now space power. Part of our core values is to advocate for aerospace power and STEM education at the elementary and secondary levels. We recognize as a nation, we are no longer producing sufficient graduates in the STEM disciplines to maintain our technological competitiveness in the global marketplace. AFA, with nationally recognized programs like Cyber Patriot and Stellar Explorers, the Air and Space Forces Association has long been a leader and an active partner in supporting a stronger STEM education. Another education program we sponsor is STEM Teacher of the Year, and that's, of course, why we're here this evening. And Dan is a shipment. The purpose of this Teacher of the Year program is to recognize classroom teachers for their accomplishments and achievements in exciting their scholars about STEM and preparing them to use and contribute to tomorrow's technologies. And Mr. Geiger is certainly doing that. The Seidel Chapter of Air and Space Association is extremely proud to have Daniel Geiger of Prosper High School and now Warrant Grove High School as our STEM Teacher of the Year. When I received and read the nomination, it became absolutely apparent to me that his colleagues and especially his students wanted him to win this award. This is a unique opportunity to reward Mr. Geiger as one of those special teachers who makes coming to class an adventure. As the Seidel Chapter Teacher of the Year and for your outstanding work, I have a couple of things here for you. I also have a lapel pin for you that says Teacher of the Year. And most importantly, he already has the money, but here's my copy of a check for $1,000 for each Seidel.
That's great.
He's moral. Since he was the winner of the Seidel Chapter Teacher of the Year, he was also nominated as AFA Texas Teacher of the Year Award. The AFA judges, believe me, had a hard time selecting a winner from a group of six well-qualified teachers. On behalf of the Air and Space Forces Association, Texas, I wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your participation in the AFA Texas of the Year Award competition. And better yet, I wish to congratulate you as the first-place winner. Also have a pair for you. So there was October Outlaw game.
Matches colors.
This will bring on some cool weather because you brought this jacket.
Today has been a nice, small drop center.
And we have another lapel pin for your other lapel. Yes. Most importantly, a check for $1,500. I just want to...
I mean, if you've got another large check.
You're looking for one? We don't do school bonds.
How do you know what we're up to?
I read the newspaper.
Very good. Well, I do want everyone to know this story, a very special story about Dan. He came to me about three years ago. He was working in the business industry as an engineer, and he wanted to sit down and visit with me, and gladly, I said, yes, please come in and visit. And so he talked so passionately about his wife, Michaela Geiger, who is one of our educators in the district, and talked about watching her and seeing the impact that she made with students and just how inspired he was, and that he wanted that same opportunity. And so he was trying to figure out, how could he do that same work that his wife did? And I just thought that was such a special thing, and Michaela is one of our most outstanding educators. She works in our curriculum department now. But for him to speak so passionately about his wife and for her to inspire him in a level to make him go, I think I want to do what she does. So thank you for growing yet another teacher in our wonderful school district. It would be so very, very fortunate to have you, Mr. Geiger, watching you with your students, your passion, your love. It's truly an inspiration to all around you. So thank you very much.
Let me just add one thing. I've been doing this for 21 years. That is, I've been involved with the education with AFA for 20 years, and I've looked at a lot of Teacher of the Year packages. This was by far the best one I've ever seen. I can't say it enough because what really came out was the students' appreciation had for him. Thank you.
I mean, I'm not related. We're supposed to be related.
He used to be the Air Force photographer. So he managed to watch him doing what he's doing.
What do you want to say? So we also have the Texas Girls Coaches Association, and this is a first for us in Prosper ISD. For the first time in the history of Texas athletics, both the TGCA Field Athletes, so track and field, so the Field Athlete and the TGCA Track Athlete of the Year are from the same district, and that would be Prosper ISD. So we're very excited about that. So Skylin Townsend from Rock Hill High School. And Coach Zach Morgan. And then we have Lauren Miller from Prosper High School. I don't think Lauren is with us tonight because she is busy at the University of Texas running track, so she's not with us tonight. And Lauren is a repeat, just like Skylin, that's somebody that we announce and recognize at these meetings, that she was the Track Athlete of the Year, and her coach, Jackie Chris. Coach Chris is here tonight. Well, it's going to be all about the two of you. Congratulations. And then big news continues to come out of Rushing Middle School. If you remember, we announced the Midwest plan for our band at Rushing, which is a huge honor, and in December, they will be making their way to Chicago. And then I was fortunate enough to get another notification, and this was about the Rushing Middle School Orchestra. So we have the Rushing Symphony Orchestra is one of two middle schools selected to perform in the prestigious music for All National Orchestra Festival in Indianapolis in March. So at this time, I'm going to ask this win and her students to come forward. Okay, so I have a question before we do pictures. How many of you were in Suzuki Strings? Excellent. And Ms. Holt, yes, come up there, Ms. Holt. I think you need to be a part of this as well. Uh, Ms. Holt actually started our Suzuki Strings program, which is our elementary program for orchestra. What year was that?
2016.
2016. So it started at King's Song, and we have now expanded over to Johnson Middle School with our Suzuki Strings program. And our waiting list is quite exhaustive, and I think that the work that you have done is a direct result of what we're now seeing in middle schools and our high school orchestra. So I wanted to say thank you for that. Round of applause. And to our students, congratulations. This is a huge honor, and I know that the amount of hours and work that you put in and parents, thank you for supporting them, making sure that they have all the support that they need in order to be able to be as highly successful as possible. And I just want to say, we're dreaming of a performing arts center one day in Prosper ISD, and we hope that that time comes by the time you're in high school so that we can see you performing on that very prestigious stage, hopefully, in the near future in Prosper ISD. But until then, we will say good luck and good luck. Thank you. Good job. Congratulations to all of you.
Okay. We will now have a brief intermission before we go into our public hearing on a proposed budget and tax rate. Students, y'all are more than welcome to stay and listen to tax rate stuff if you would like to. Don't feel like you have to. I know that y'all have all got class tomorrow and I'm sure homework, so we will give y'all just a couple of minutes if you'd like to go. If not, feel free to stay and join us. We're talking numbers.
Congratulations to everyone.
All right. Well, now, everybody that stayed, you know, y'all are in for a treat. Okay, let's talk numbers here. We will now conduct a public hearing to discuss the 2023-24 proposed budget and tax rate. So with that being said, we will hand it off.
Ms. Sees.
Yes. Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Dr. Ferguson, Mr. Beavers, members of the board. Tonight, we are conducting the public hearing on the 2324 budget and asking you to adopt the tax rate. I think a picture is worth a thousand words, and I think this helps us remember why we do what we do. The topics tonight, we're going to go over the tax rate, we're going to go over the adjustments since the last meeting, we're going to review the revenue, expenses, the functional changes from last year, food service, and debt service. This is just a quick look at that balancing act between the state share and the local share. So as the state share goes up, as the local share goes up, the state share goes down and vice versa. This is the bucket scenario that we've seen in the past. The state determines the district's needs, and if we fill it up, we essentially fund it ourselves, which is what Prosper ISD primarily does. If we don't completely fill it up, the state adds dollars. If it overflows, then that's what's known as excess revenue or recapture in the olden days, Robin Hood. Updates since the July meeting, so we have the updated property value numbers. We know that the homestead exemption is going to be voted on in November, but it will be more than likely going from $40,000 to $100,000 for each home owner. We had the big tax rate compression, which will not affect the general fund. There'll be a hold harmless for that, and it will affect the debt service fund as far as property values and the amount of debt that we can take on. Senate Bill 2, out of the 88th legislature, brought the homestead exemption to us, and then it also included the tax rate compression, which reduced our MNO rate by .1854 cents. And this is the tax rate history. As you can see, the tax rate is significantly lower than it was in previous years. The compression reduced the tax rate by the .1854 cents in MNO between last year's rate and this year's rate. As stated previously, the MCR is given to us by the state, so we have to wait on that through their formula. The debt rate will remain constant at the 50 cents. It's important to note that with this compression, we will collect less in tax revenue, but the state will again offset the loss of funding with what's known as hold harmless. The language in the motion that you will use to adopt the tax rate is provided to us by the Tax Office through state legislation, and it's part of truth and taxation. We are required by statute to calculate that, and that's calculated by the Tax Office, and then we verify that information. Many times, I've asked myself, like, why do they do this? Because it's very confusing. But the intent of the statute is to inform the taxpayers from year to year, the difference in the tax rate. Because the tax bill is a function of not just the tax rate, but also the property value to which the rate applies. There is a no new revenue tax rate that is required. It's intended to give them an apples-to-apples comparison, but it doesn't take into account anything other than the local revenue. So the motion that we are going to ask you to adopt tonight, even though the tax rate is going down by the .1854 cents, the motion we are required to adopt says, "I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 1.2575," which is effectively a .93% increase in the tax rate. So the no new tax rate that was calculated by the Tax Office and verified by us was 1.245945. So that's where the .93% comes in. And that is the difference in the no new revenue and the proposed tax rate. The budget is built on 2,600 students, which we know we've surpassed that. We also like to note that we haven't actually lost money, but the fast-growth allotment, if we were funded fully, we would get six-plus million more in revenue, so we like to note And we expect to continue to see the increase in interest rates. Next, we're going to look at revenue. As we move through the next slides, we'll be comparing the original 2223 budget to the preliminary or proposed budget. As you can see, the 2324 budget is $296 million. It's up 45.7 from last year. The local revenue is made up primarily of interest. It also includes, like, athletic revenue, facility revenue, and et cetera. I want to point out that part of the $130 million for the state revenue is $15 million for a TRS entry that we're required to make. It's related to our employees' retirement, and it's a flow-through entry. It's just a requirement on our part. In the federal revenue, we have minimal amounts from reimbursement programs, like Technology has an E-rate program that we get money back for. SARS, the Special Education Department, has reimbursements, and then we have minimal indirect costs for our grants. The adjustment since the last meeting, the state revenue has been increased and the local revenue has decreased based on the additional legislation that we just talked about. Based on the interest from 2223, we did up that just a little bit. Next, we'll review the expenditure budget with an overall increase of $46.9 million, $306 million, for a total of $306 million. The budget includes 454 additional staff members, as well as salary increases for existing staff, and as you can see, over 81% of the budget is payroll. The safety grant that we received, we discussed previously, reduced payroll in the general fund this year by $100,000, but we don't expect that to continue next year. So we wanted to make sure we let you know about that. We did increase for the recapture payment that we talked about last time. And again, significant costs associated with non-personnel, as well as things related to inflation, growth, utilities, property insurance, and fuels, that's all part of the increase here. Costs to set up the new campuses, the actual campuses funded through bond funds, but the day-to-day and the maintenance has to come from the general fund. The ESAR fund, a lot of the ESAR fund is coming back to the general fund, so the district was very strategic in how they planned that because we wanted to make sure that we weren't incurring recurring costs so that we could sustain that. And I would also just like to highlight that, again, that there was a big focus on refining staffing ratios this year. HR and the business office worked really hard on that, and that's critical as the district continues to grow. Next, we're going to review the expenditure budget at the functional level. I know we reviewed this last month, but I wanted to highlight the key information to recap and also provide context to the community members. We are required to adopt at the fund and functional level. The function tells us why the expense is happening, and later on in the presentation, we have broken out the general fund by major objects. So all of these buckets have payroll, supplies, services within these, and so later on, you'll see the major objects broken out. This slide and the following expenditure slides are separated by like functions, meaning like this group is directly related to classrooms. It contains the supplies, personnel, et cetera. As a reminder, that the almost $47 million that the budget increased, $22 million is directly related to instruction, so you can see that here. Function 21 did increase, but it was due to growth and restructuring campus leadership support positions. The district anticipated the needs to streamline The district anticipated the needs to streamline communication and create consistency across the board. And I can personally say I have experienced, it's been wonderful. That's been very helpful for all departments. There were also some reclassifications to better reflect job duties, and you'll notice between thirteen and twenty-one, thirteen increased very, was a minimal increase, and twenty-one was larger increase, so that, this is a reason for this as well. Thirteen is curriculum-type expenditures, and twenty-one is overseeing instructional staff. So this is very normal for these to kind of go back and forth depending on the, the district size and that kind of thing. This section is student service support. We are refining staffing, staff coding and growth. The large increase in function thirty-one is primarily due to adding a number of new positions due to growth. One example of that is five counselors at Walnut Grove. Some were due to new, some were due to these new campus additions. Some were coding changes to refine expense or job duties. Some were moved during the year, so they weren't, they weren't reflected in the twenty-two, twenty-three number, so that's part of the increase. Some of these positions were coded to ESAR, so they're coming back. And then our AP secretaries support the counselors as well, so those salaries are split-coded now. So we have a number of things going on with thirty-one. Function thirty-three and thirty-four are related to growth, and thirty-five and thirty-six are related to new campuses and increases associated with the third high school. The next section is related to district services. You'll notice that function fifty-one is twenty-seven million dollars. It's the second-largest function other than eleven, which is completely understandable. We're, we are increasing this due to opening four new schools, and it also contains a lot of really big-ticket items, such as custodial, grounds crews, utilities, and property insurance. Function fifty-two is in here. Security falls in this group. Prosper ISD has historically made security a priority and has chosen to invest significantly above the state allocation. Since August of two thousand nineteen, we've had one officer on each campus, and presently, we have two officers on each high school, and then two security officers on each high school. So if you'll see that the budget is three-point-one million, and the state allotment will be around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So this means that Prosper ISD funds this ninety-two percent locally, with the rest going to the state. Last year, when House Bill three happened, there were a lot of districts scrambling, and we were already in compliance because of our priority here. We did receive that safety grant that we talked about for eight-hundred thousand. That is not included in the numbers above, but it will come back next year. And then function fifty-three is data processing, which is technology, and a large increase due to the growth, devices, subscriptions, software, and personnel. The next group is really just other costs. Function seventy-one is not our bond payments. They're handled in the debt service fund. It contains leases such as copiers, mail machines, office lease. It also contains software subscriptions that are longer than a year. This is a new requirement. They're expecting us to code these to seventy-one. So part of some of the other functional changes are related to this as well. A lot of these were in function eleven. Function eighty-one allows us to handle projects and portables and costs associated with that without dipping into our bond funds. The ninety functions are intergovernmental charges for things like appraisal districts, which were charged a portion of their budget. Function ninety-one is the recapture payment that we talked about. So you see the one-point-eight million there. And this is estimated on student enrollment, therefore, the numbers will be adjusted as needed. The next couple of slides are just different ways to review the expenditure budget. This slide reviews the percentage by functional section from the previous slides that you just saw. It includes a comparison from the last two years. And as you can see, the, the percentages are somewhat similar. The changes are expected due to the growth of the district and the need for additional support for campuses and departments that we've talked about. We have refined and recoded expenditures. Other costs, the other costs at the bottom are related to function seventy-one that we talked about. That is, a, a big change there is related to that with this debt requirement that we're, that were required. It started in twenty-two, twenty-three, so that's why you kind of see the percentage going up. That's the same slide. This is the expenditures by major object. This is what I was referring to before. The objects, the object codes indicate what the expense is. So this is a look at the general budget as a whole, meaning all the functional levels. Each functional level contains or can contain each of these major objects. And you can see payroll is eighty, over eighty-one percent. The next highest, as you would expect, is the services, which is utilities, property, insurance, followed by supplies. Other, other expenses are travel, insurance, and dues. And the debt service that you see is, is the lease, software subscriptions, and it's primarily function seventy-one. And the capital outlay that you see are the small construction projects that we talked about, and that's primarily eighty-one. And then we're going to move on to food service. So this is a conservative estimate based on enrollment growth and meals served in twenty-two, twenty-three. The ending numbers for food service for twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three are positive and have exceeded projections due to the, we've served a lot of additional meals. We will continue to monitor this throughout the year for any necessary adjustments. The debt service fund, as addressed previously, the hundred-thousand-dollar homestead exemption for all homeowners will reduce our values. It will not affect our revenue, because the state will hold harmless for any payments that we've already obligated ourselves to. But it does limit the debt that we can assume. We just have to make sure we can make the, the bond payments. The revenue is made up primarily of tax payments, and then hold harmless will happen this year, and expenses are primarily debt payments and associated fees. This does project a small increase in fund balance, which is needed as the budget continues to grow to ensure ability to make the future payments and allows additional flexibility for a number of decisions that we work closely with our financial advisor and the finance committee. The next slide is just, we are required to post this on the website, and so it's in your packets as a one-pager. We split it up just for visual purposes. And this is posted as proposed until it's adopted. This is the expenditure section by function that's posted, and this shows the nine-point-eight million dollar deficit that we previously discussed. Again, we will more than offset this by what we're putting in for twenty-two, twenty-three. At assumes we've spent every dollar and filled every position. And with the fast growth that we're experiencing, and we feel like we will in the foreseeable future, we feel this is the most conservative and responsible method. Adopting the proposed deficit ensures we are assuming a worst-case scenario for twenty-three, twenty-four. But Prosper ISD has a history of adding to fund balance by savings on the expense side and outperforming on the revenue side. This method gives us flexibility for future needs if we do see any kind of uncertainty. And that concludes our hearing.
Thank you.
Again, I'm sorry. Again, I just want to say that this is an extremely collaborative effort, and I don't, I hesitate to list them, because I'm afraid I'm going to forget somebody. But we want to thank everybody that was involved in, especially you, the board, for being so involved with this district. And then I'm happy to address any questions.
Well, thank you very much. First off, this now brings us to a point where we can have the discussion amongst the board, ask questions. So with that being said, any thoughts, comments, things that y'all have?
Ms. Sees, thank you for that. You answered, I had three questions, you answered all of them. But the safety thing, I think, is, I want to just kind of remind the community how much we invest. How much do we get funding?
Three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, isn't that what you just said?
Two, I think it's two-fifty.
So that means two-point-nine million we come up with on our own. That's huge. And we didn't have to scramble when some other districts did, so I think that's really great.
Ninety-two percent, you said locally, is what we're.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do huge, and hey, we'll take this opportunity as we do most times. Chief Fessels, Assistant Chief Wolverton, thank you all for everything that y'all do. We, you know, y'all are worth the money. We believe that, and so does the community. So thank you for everything that it is that you and your department do.
Thank you. I was going to say, thank you for the presentation and all that you and your department has done to prepare. And thank you also for your clarification and explanation of the language in the motion. We discussed it last week with the bond, how confusing the legislation makes it for the public and, and for us as well. So thank you for taking the time to, to reiterate why it's worded that way.
Yeah, so was the first thing I was going to say, it's clear as mud.
Exactly. It's like, the more you talk about it, the more confusing it gets.
Yeah, yeah. The one question I had, we're still waiting on legislation for the fast-growth allotment. There's a chance some of that could come back, but we're not banking on anything at this point in time.
I wouldn't bank on it.
Right. That's the way legislation seems to be going right now. The number you said for new employees, I wanted to make sure I captured, it was?
Four-hundred-and-fifty-four.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think that's a huge, you know, part as we look at the growth of our district, the growth of the budget. And that's, it's incredible, so.
And that's not your attrition. So these are just new ads that she's talking about. I think Ms. Hunt said we processed eight-hundred, over eight-hundred employees this summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just echo my thanks as well. I've learned a lot these last few months, and school financing is, is fun, the way the process comes together. So I remember the first time you shared the budget with us, I had lots of questions, but throughout the several, I guess we've got to see it now, three different occasions. Between that, the packet, the questions I had were answered ahead of that. So I appreciate the work you guys have done. It's incredibly complex, and given the legislation, it's difficult to do what we've done. But I applaud the efforts of you and your entire team.
Thank you.
I know it's an undertaking to keep it going every year, not to mention the incredible amount of growth we're continuing to see. I echo Mr. Beaver's sentiment with the, with the police force. We love you guys dearly, and we're grateful for y'all. And it was encouraging to see how far ahead we are of other districts as they have to now navigate what this looks like here in the next couple of days, if they haven't already. So grateful for that and grateful for you guys to make this work, considering all the headwinds that are out there that you're facing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments? Okay.
I mean, not highlight the tax rate, that's kind of a.
Yes. I mean, it's the lowest that we've ever had in Prosper ISD, lowest tax rate ever.
Largest reduction ever.
Yeah.
I did see, I did go out and dig on TEA, and I did see that for sure. But they only had two thousand five and above, so I'm quite sure it is the lowest. But I did try to dig around on that, because we haven't all been here since then.
Well, I, I mean, hey, thank y'all, thank you to the rest of the board. This is a, it's a great win for the community. I'm excited about that, I think people are as well. It's, we're doing a good thing there, so appreciate y'all's work on that.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Yeah. Okay, we don't have, we did not have anybody sign up for public comment within this portion of, of the hearing, so we will now close this portion and go back into the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Sees.
Thank you.
Sounds funny to say also that we closed that portion to go back into the meeting. That's right, meeting within the meeting. Okay, now we, we go into our public comment portion of the meeting. Am I saying that right? Yes. Let's see here, I believe that we have one person that has signed.
No, because it's agenda-related.
Oh.
Non-agenda, so a little bit later.
Okay, excuse me, I'm off on that.
Onto informational.
Informational reports, thank you, Dr. Ferguson.
Okay, so student enrollment, we are at twenty-seven thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-three students today, when I looked, so a little bit higher than what we have on this report. I think we're just a little under three-hundred students since the start of school on August ninth that have added since August ninth. So we keep growing, it's great. So, yes.
Hundred per week, here we go.
Yes, we'll slow down a little bit. Labor Day, there's always a little bit of a lull, so. You can see by campus where we are with our numbers. Okay, in our twenty-nineteen bond, there's an update on our bond projects.
Some intense music.
Yeah.
Lights look great, by the way.
Hey, do.
Want to go see some light bulbs? Looks great.
It's good stuff right there.
We're serious about our light bulbs.
Yes, ma'am. Let's go.
I think we've got to step up their music game now, you know?
I know. I know, I know. How do we continue? Okay, we will. So Ms. Biggs at this time, um, actually Ms. Anderson, Julie Anderson, who is our new career and technical education director, is going to come to the podium. And so we are glad that she is here, and she's gonna give us a report on the 2024 Texas Accountability System changes.
I was waiting for my walk-up song, but it didn't happen. Okay, so um, actually, the state of Texas, TEA specifically, decided that it was time, legislatively speaking, to do an accountability refresh. So we call this the 2023 account accountability refresh. So we're gonna talk about the changes that were made to this accountability system and the impacts that it's gonna have across the state of Texas. So the first thing that happened is they did a star redesign. So I don't know if you got to hear about the new item types that hit the STAR exams this year, but that was one of the things that happened out of House Bill thirty-nine oh six. They redesigned the star, added those new item types. We also have to remember that our third graders, our first-time STAR test takers are also our COVID babies, right? They were in kinder when um, COVID hit, and so they're first-time test takers, so just give them some grace. Um, the resulting implications are, again, we don't know what that's gonna look like fully across the board in the state of Texas until those scores are released. But it also delayed that reporting timeline for the STAR, so we didn't get those scores as early as we would have liked. The biggest thing with this accountability refresh that we need to be thinking about is that we cannot compare 2022 ratings to 2023 ratings. This is like comparing apples to oranges. I know Michelle said apples to apples, we're talking apples to like rocket ships here, okay? When we're talking about this new refresh, they made a lot of changes in how we calculate um, our domains, how we scale those domains. So there's all these implications that have hit. Um, so we want, I call it the tooth fairy standard, right? Like my mom said when she lost a tooth in the sixties, that she put it under her pillow, she got a quarter, she was pumped, right? If you put a quarter under their pillow now, they're gonna look at you like you're crazy, right? So from nineteen sixty till now, the standard has changed. What the state of Texas has done is they've taken us from the nineteen sixty standard to the 2023 standard in one year. So this is how we calculate A through F accountability overall. So we have three domains, student achievement, school progress, and closing the gaps. So those are our three domains. Out of school progress, which is domain two, we have a best of opportunity. So we can take part A, which is academic growth, or we can take part B, which is relative performance, and pick our best. We don't pick our best, they pick our best, right? And they give it to us for our domain two score. From there, between domain one and domain two, we get to pick the best of again. And they pick the best of those two, and that counts for seventy percent of our total overall score for accountability. Then we have domain three, which is more of our federal accountability indicators, and that's thirty percent of our overall score. So they add those best of plus domain three, and that gives us us overall score. Some notable changes with this refresh is that there's new district domain and component rating calculations. So what does this mean? They've changed the way they configure a domain, but then also the way they configure it overall. So if we're looking at 2022, our scores may have gone up, we may have improved across the board, but when you see it, it's gonna look like we went down, right? It might, we don't know what they look like yet, not until September, but that's what's gonna happen across the state of Texas. In domain two and domain three, there's also new calculation and scaling methods, so our scales have changed. So what a sixty was good before might look like something totally different now. So we have to keep that in mind when we look at those scores, we can't say, well, in 2022, we were X, Y, Z, because it's totally different. College, career, and military readiness, I almost wanna take a poll and see who who's heard of this before. Um, I know a few of you would raise your hands, but CCMR is kind of a buzzword for the past few years, and it's gonna continue to be for the next several. So college, career, and military readiness is a component through our A, of our A through F rating. The thing about it is, is it hits in all three domains of A through F. So this isn't just a single entity that hits in one of our domains, it's across the board, it's gonna hit in all three. That is why we are gonna consider the CCMR changes our heaviest hitter. It is a big hit to state, to schools across the state of Texas. So right now in our current system, if you have sixty percent of your students that are college, career, and military-ready according to the TEA indicators, not according to what we know in our hearts, but according to the TEA indicators, sixty percent scales to an A. Current 2022 accountability. Starting with 2023 accountability, that cut point has jumped to eighty-eight percent. So remember that tooth fairy standard, we've gone a twenty-eight percent jump from one year to the next. So now it takes an eighty-eight percent to scale to an A in CCMR. And because it hits in all three domains, again, it's a heavy hit. This is kind of a pictorial representation of what that looks like. So in prior system, a sixty to a one hundred, which I grant you is a big range, but that was your A range, okay? That's what we were looking at in schools across Texas. If you were a sixty or above, you were scaled to an A. Now, that once A standard has dropped all the way down to a C. Okay, so if you were a sixty, you were rocking and rolling, now you're at a C, okay? And eighty-eight becomes that new A. That means the resulting implications are that forty-seven percent of school districts in Texas with an A rating will drop one or more letter grades. Forty-seven percent, almost half of our schools, are gonna go down one to two letter grades. That's big. In addition, we have six percent now of schools that rate a D or an F in CCMR, that number will jump to forty-one percent. Okay, again, almost half of our schools will drop to a D or a F in CCMR for accountability, heavy hit. So this is perhaps one of the biggest things we need to recognize when it comes to CCMR and the changes that are being made. First is that CCMR is considered what we call a lagging indicator. So our 2022 accountability was actually based on our 2021 graduates. And our 2023 accountability will be based on, for CCMR specifically, will be based on our 2022 graduates. So we have these students, class of twenty-two, twenty-two, they graduate. The state of Texas comes in in the spring of 2023 and creates the new standard. So that means that we have no ability whatsoever to go back and change what happened in 2022, right? Those kids are gone. Okay, so 2023, that standard comes out, we can't change anything that happened with class of 2022. So districts are being held to a standard that did not exist when those students graduated, heavy hit. So we don't know what those scores are gonna look out like, they're gonna come out in September, we'll finalize that, there's a lot of things that go into it, a lot of direct reports to the state, et cetera. But here's what we do know, we know that ninety-nine point seven-five percent of Prosper ISD students graduated in the class of 2022. That far exceeds the state and national average, that's extremely impressive, you tell any school that, and they're gonna be jealous. Okay, we also know that seventy-five percent of the class of 2022 went to a two- or a four-year university or college. So that means seventy-five percent of our students are not only college-ready, but they're going to college, right? That means Prosper has created a culture where college is an option for every student, but it's not the only option. We also know that one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four students earned an industry-recognized credential, which means that's one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four opportunities for those students to be more marketable when they apply for top-tier universities, or when they apply to graduate school or specialized programs. It's one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four opportunities for those students when they enter industry, either before college or after college, to start out at a higher wage, to promote work quickly, and be more likely to get the position. Okay, we also know that the students in Prosper ISD outperform the region and the state on both SAT and ACT. So when we're looking at, are our students college, career, and military readiness? I would say yes, and that's due to the high-quality education, the transformative learning that's in every classroom across Prosper ISD. And we thank you for supporting that and for being our collaborative partner in all of those post-secondary outcomes, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Anderson?
I have a question.
Yes.
So our friends in Austin changed the rules halfway through the game, they don't fully fund us, and they make us call a tax rate decrease, a tax rate increase? Just making sure I'm understanding all this.
You just summed that up so beautifully. And yes, 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 to all of those things, um, yes.
I was told no questions, but.
That is the most positive talk I have ever heard when somebody talked about the STAR test. Excellent job, I mean, you took a STAR, which I don't think anybody's happy to talk about, but you turned that positive, so excellent job there.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
That was very informative, thank you.
Anything else? No, okay, thanks, y'all.
And and since we're discussing, I just want to point out also that it's um, you're you're retro scoring, but also um, interesting timing right before special session that all the schools are getting reformulated and scored.
Interesting how that works.
I do think, I'm thankful that we have a big push on community-based accountability and really focusing on what's important to our community. Um, so as much as we need to pay attention to this, Prosper ISD is unique by design in that way.
We are, and um, obviously, our students are doing extremely well, and we're proud of that. I was telling Mr. Beavers, I've never had a parent run up to me and say, man, taking that fourth-grade STAR test just changed my kid's life. But I sure have had them come up and talk about the culinary program, right? Or the certified nursing assistant program and and what their students are able to do, and what they're doing in the future with what they learned here. And and that's really what we're about, is what will happen in the future for our students. Um, tested, and we'll take the test, right? Because we do, uh, kids take driver's tests, they take SATs, they take ACTs, so it is a part of what we do. But we never want our students to be judged by a test on one day. Um, we really wanna see what is that full exposure of the curriculum and the learning and the magic that our teachers bring to the classroom for each of our students. So I think that's more where we uh, wanna put our bread and butter on what our kids are doing, so appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson, excellent job.
Thank you. All right, any other thoughts, comments? All right. And moving along, that is the last of our informational reports, which will take us into action items this evening. Ten A, the first one up, consideration and possible action regarding the 2022-23 Prosper ISD annual budget. Uh, we did just discuss the budget here a couple minutes ago. Thoughts on that from anyone? Uh, great presentation, everything, um. Yeah, I, nothing to add to what was brought up earlier. Um, with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the 2023-2024 Prosper ISD annual budget as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender, uh, any other further discussion there? Okay, all in favor? All right, that is all six of us that are here this evening, none opposed. That passes. B, consideration and possible action regarding the maintenance and operation tax rate and interest and sinking uh, tax rate for 2022, or excuse me, 2023-24 school year. Talked about this one also at length. Anyone, anything? Laid it all out there pretty well earlier.
Yeah, I just wanna reinforce the largest decrease that we've seen uh, in Prosper ISD history, so I'm encouraged that we're able to to get to that, considering all of the challenges that are facing us, so it's encouraging to see.
Yeah, excellent point. Uh, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Linker, is there a second?
Oh, let me make the motion, sorry. New B specifically. Uh, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of one point two-five-seven-five, which is effectively a zero point nine-three percent increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, and and again, to reiterate what was talked about, that's the funny language that happens there, that um, yeah, so, okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor? That is all six of us this evening. All right, ten C, consider impossible action regarding the final budget amendments and designation fund balance for twenty-two, twenty-three. Questions on that, anyone? Okay, hearing none, uh, does anyone have a motion there?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr.
I move the board approve the final budget amendments and designate fund balance for twenty-two, twenty-three as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. All right, I will go ahead and call for the vote, I think that we're there at this point on it, so all in favor? That is all six of us, none opposed. All right. Consideration and possible action regarding the twenty-three, twenty-four Prosper ISD annual budget. This one again, hey, thank y'all, y'all did a great job um, bringing that, proposed the uh.
Waivers.
Sorry, I got lost on something. I'll get the second page.
You all have a report for the classroom waivers?
Yes.
Any questions about those?
Is this, was a couple, couple months ago, you had brought one of the changes with uh, DOI?
Yes.
And that we're gonna file one, is it file one time, but then update each month?
Yeah, it allows our HR department to go ahead and submit those as they're coming in, rather than holding them all at once. Um, and we will continue to bring them back to you every single month so that you have those numbers and you know exactly where we are, but it was the one-time approval. Um, but we will continue to bring those back to you.
Thank you, and and we did make that point last month or the month before when we approved that, that we will discuss that every month for everybody, just for transparency reasons. Um, so this is ten D, I have now gotten back to the correct spot, so thank you, Dr. Ferguson, for that. Is there a motion on ten D?
I move that the board approve one general classroom waiver to the Texas Education Agency in accordance with the District of Innovation Plan as presented by administration.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf, discussion, anything? All right, all in favor? That is all six of us, none opposed. That brings us to ten E. Consideration and possible action regarding the Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System, TTESS, appraisers for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Uh, that was a list that we received of, uh, long list, excuse me, um, of everyone. Uh, is there a motion there?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf.
Move that the board approve the Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System Appraisers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented by administration.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Linker, uh, any discussion questions?
Yeah, I'm just thankful we have, you know, a great group of administrators and other staff that step into this role, and it's, you know, an extra duty they have, but it only makes us better as a district, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
It was a long list, which I'm grateful for.
Yes, good point, thank you. Okay, anything else? All right then, all in favor? That is all six of us. Okay, we are going to uh, pull F to uh, pull up, clean up a little language there, we'll have that one for next month. Brings us to G. Consideration and possible action regarding designation of non-business days for Purpose of Public Information Act for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-three calendar year.
This came out of the eighty-eighth legislative session um, that we needed to designate days, because whenever we would have a holiday break or spring break, any of those spans of time, then the clock would stop ticking when a public information request would come in, and so the state said what we would need to do by the September one date, which we know is the magic date on all the things that have come out of the legislative session, is that we would need to designate on our school calendar, what are those ten additional days, and where would those be? And so this way, it's uh, very transparent for our community to know exactly what days, those are open days, in order to be able to submit any kind of public information request if they're choosing to do so. So we'll get this updated on the website.
Perfect, thank you for that explanation, Dr. Ferguson. Uh, is there a motion?
Uh, I'll make the motion, I move that the board designate non-business days for purposes of the Public Information Act for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-three calendar year as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender, uh, after Dr. Ferguson's uh, explanation there, any questions, comments, anything? Okay, call a vote on that, all in favor? That is all six of us. H, consideration and possible action regarding additional employee payments, resolution, Dr. Ferguson, something on this one as well.
Yes, looking at different ways in which we can retain our teachers and support them at the highest levels, so wanna bring this to you for consideration. We can never pay them enough or give them enough um, for all that they do, the countless hours that they give. But when we do have opportunities to do that, we certainly wanna step in and and try to help with that, and I know that each of you feel that same way about our staff.
Absolutely, um, they are amazing, we believe so, and want to do everything that we can for them. With that, uh, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, I move that the board approve the additional employee payments resolution as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Dial, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon, uh, discussion on that?
Yeah, I think for what it's worth, uh, I was having a conversation with a soon-to-be Prosper ISD educator, if I have anything to do with it. Uh, but I think is there, people are, educators are looking around at neighboring districts. Um, it's just something that I wanna say on record, that there is additional incentive outside of what just the base salary or the salary you see, that we as a district have done to incentivize and retain staff. And so um, for all those soon-to-be Prosper ISD educators who are watching a Prosper ISD school board meeting, just hear that, so.
Yeah, I think to Jordan's point, I think we all feel that way. If I could legally vote twice for this, I would. In favor, to be clear. So yes.
There we go. I like that. Mr. Van Wolf, that's good. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor? That is absolutely all six of us. Thank you all for that. Takes us to I, a lot of these this evening. Consideration and possible action regarding resolution for school closures due to weather or other emergencies. Dr. Ferguson?
Yeah, so the last several years, we have experienced pretty severe winter weather. And many times what that will keep us from doing is coming to school. And so we have our employees who are on contract, and then we have our at-will employees. And we want to make sure that we're able to still pay them even if they're not able to come for those days due to inclement weather. So this resolution allows us the ability, hopefully we won't have bad weather, but in the event that we do, then we're, we're ready if we get into those winter months and have ice.
Is there a limit to the number of days? Is this hopefully zero, of course, but is there a limit to how far that extends?
Well, um, certainly we would work through that. I will say our maintenance department, it really doesn't matter what's going on, they're coming in, that those men and women are absolutely incredible when we get in these situations and they work around the clock trying to ensure that our buildings are safe and that they're protected and so that we can have school when that moment comes. We haven't really run into long, long, prolonged. I think about a week is about as long as we've gone in the past. I think that first winter weather where it just iced the entire state of Texas. But we'll certainly play that by year. Keep you all informed because our kids will be at home and parents will be wishing that our doors were open, so.
I don't know about y'all, I'm just happy to say the word ice right now.
That's fair, that's fair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ferguson. Uh, do we have a motion for this?
I move that the board approve the resolution for school closures due to weather or other emergencies as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Uh, any other discussion on that? Other than the word ice again, and the nice heat outside. Okay, calling for a vote, all in favor? That is all six of us, none opposed. All right, this takes us to J. Consideration and possible action regarding the District Improvement Plan. You all reviewed that in your packet. Dr. Ferguson, if you could, do you have anything to add to that for us?
Yes, so the District Improvement Plan is our guide and our template in which the work that we will do. One of the things that we work very diligently on is how to align that with our strategic plan along with my superintendent goals and then looking at how those goals then trickle down into our administrators' goals at the campus level through the T-Pass system. So making sure that we have a lot of clarity and arrows pointing in the right direction. We will also have formative reviews three times throughout the school year with the District Site-Based Committee, and that's made up of community members, business members, teacher and staff, parents. And we will actually review each of those strategies to talk about how we're making progress or if we're not making progress in those areas. So it's a very collaborative method in which we handle the District Improvement Plan.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Ferguson in here? I know that you had some previously in the packet that were given this past week. Talk through those. Okay, uh, is there a motion for J?
I move that the board approve the District Innovation Plan as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Um, any other discussion questions?
Yeah, Dr. Ferguson, uh, how is that in September when more data comes out? Like, how is the District Improvement Plan affected? Is that, will the changes be made to that, or how's that handled when additional data comes up?
It could, and that comes through that collaborative team. When you look at what those performance strategies are and the way that that plan was developed, you may find that the data now is informing you in a different direction. And so you as the board, you're looking at the, the overall goals and then approving those. But the way in which we get there, then that could be amended. That is a fluid process within that collaborative team saying, I'm not sure exactly that we need to be doing this because the data is informing us in this direction. And so we would make those adjustments in order to start moving in the correct area. And certainly I would give you updates on those if there were drastic changes. Most of the time it's not, but with what Ms. Anderson shared and what we may be getting soon in September from the state, some of that STAR data may push us in a different direction to maybe put some goals that are more heavy and more emphasis on that CCMR that she was discussing. So that could be an example of what you might see.
Thank you. Okay. Any other, well, we need a motion at this point?
We had one.
Oh, we did. Oh, we did already have that, and that was the last discussion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Almost halfway through the alphabet here, so. Okay, we'll go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor. That is all six of us. Thank you all for keeping up with me tonight. Well, anyway. Okay, and now getting to the campus improvement plan part of it. Consideration and possible action regarding the campus improvement plan, just to the district, now campus. Anything to add on that one?
I think to note, and you all are aware of this, but we have moved to a campus plan on the page and then the department plan on a page, something that gives us kind of a simplified way in which to be able to be transparent with our community, to say these are the things that the campuses are working on. And then for you as a board, for our community, so that you're aware, our board actually goes out on instructional walks to be able to see what's happening at the campus level. So being able to utilize this campus plan on a page or department plan on a page, to use that as our guiding document, really to create that clarity in connection with the District Improvement Plan, I think it's gonna be a nice movement in the right direction. And I know that our, our team, as we were working through this at the leadership retreat, we're very excited about this work, being able to really kind of put this succinct information so that they know exactly what it is they're communicating and reinforcing at the campus level.
Love it.
Yeah, it was great to see the level of detail we got to review. I mean, I learned a lot just reviewing it all, so it was great.
They did a great job.
Very, very impressive to see it all concise, the goals for each specific campus.
Thank you.
And Mr. Van Wolf, you will, soon you'll get to go on the instructional walks that we had the benefit of going on last year, which I thought was absolutely great. Allowed us to speak to specific things when we hear from the community on, hey, I've seen that, we're doing a great job there. Wait, hold on, this is a little different, I think that, you know, give you a little more information on that. So um, that was great that we did that, and we're certainly going to continue to do that this year. Big fan of those.
I liked how uh every campus was different, you know, when reading through each one. The strengths of each campus are different, the areas for opportunity in growing are different, and then how they're measured. So I really appreciate that.
Yeah. I think I'll take this opportunity again, real quick, to thank our principals. They do a great job out there and just uh, you're right, Mr. Linker, getting to read through about each one of them. You can see that after having conversations with them, it's just, it's easy to see, so they do awesome. Okay, we need a, a motion on this.
I'll make a motion. Uh, I move that the board approve the campus improvement plans as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Give it to Tommy.
Rock paper, you can next one, I got you.
You got it.
Mr. Van Wolf, thank you. Uh, any other discussion or comments? Okay, go ahead and have a vote on this one, all in favor? That is all six of us. Okay, that brings us to letter L. Consideration and possible action to award elementary number 20 to Huckabee Architects. See, we have Mr. Brown out here this evening, Mr. Tremblay. Thank y'all for everything that y'all do on these as always. I think that we've got some awesome schools out there. So anything to add?
I really appreciate the work of Dr. Bradley and Mr. Shirley spearheading this. And this is in an effort to get way out in front of this build so that we're not hoofing it as we have maybe in some of our most recent projects. And with conversation with Mr. Tremblay, who is the Prosperis D architect. I, the Prosperis D architect for Huckabee. Really appreciate his collaboration and just ongoing partnership in order to really make sure that we have a seamless process moving forward. And I know that that all comes through direct leadership from Mr. Brown.
All right, uh, we'll go ahead and ask for a motion on L.
I will make a motion. I move that the board designate Huckabee Architects as the architects for elementary number 20 as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Um, any other discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor? That is one, two, three, four, five, six of us, none opposed. Okay. That will now bring us to the consent agenda. Let's see here, we have meetings from, or excuse me, minutes from several meetings. Thank you, Mr. Dial, for looking over those, keeping us honest with all of that. And then consideration and possible action regarding the cooperative management program. I had a list of everybody that was there on that, everybody had a chance to review it, uh, those things. Is there a motion?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. All in favor? That is all six of us. All right. Now on to the public comment portion that I was getting a little ahead of myself on before. Let's see here, I believe that we have one speaker this evening. And um, I'm gonna go ahead and read a little bit, but I misplaced the name. If you could write it down for me, or you could say it here in just a second, we'll call up the gentleman. Want to thank everybody that, that does speak. We always, uh, the best way to communicate with the board is to reach out individually. But absolutely this is something that we believe strongly in, is the public comment portion of this. Uh, the speaker this evening will be allotted three minutes responding, reminding the speaker that they cannot use an individual employee's or student's name and that if you would please just list your name and say whether you live within PISD's boundaries, Mr. Shira.
Mr. Shira, and we do live inside PST boundaries. Good evening, my name is Philip Shira. My wife and our parents are three PHS students that moved here in 2014. Our daughter is beginning her fourth year in the PHS softball program. Her twin sister was varsity manager, and my wife is the current Booster Club president. We're both retired Air Force soldiers and done our best to be grounded in facts rather than emotion. Attempted to use the Athletic Director Chain Event Command last May to no effect because things have not improved. PHS softball has been one of the top teams in our area for over decades, consistent playoff appearances, recently dominated with many D1 athletes. Obviously, we have the oldest facilities. Our hitting machine was built and upgraded with private funds from local donors roughly eight decades ago. It was nursed along by apparent volunteers with loan parts, loaned parts dating back to Coach Carpenter, and the last Booster Club investment was in 2019. Last season, that machine was not used, no explanation given nor anyone invited to help find a solution. Hitting in a, hitting in 6A softball is one of the, one of the most important aspects of the game, the greatest challenges. Our softball field is a visible patch job in need of complete replacement, no plan has been shared. But the comparison of our program is less concerning because of its age and more the team leadership. Rock Hill has attracted its second experienced head coach. Walnut Grove has also hired a veteran head coach. Our coach last season was not experienced, or she demonstrated maturity or resume to be a fit for our flagship program. It appeared to me her hiring was, many that her hiring was grounded more in cost than the long-term health of the program. With the staff headcount of three coaches, our JV coach used a player for first base where every opponent had a coach. But still, our teams performed. Varsity made playoff, playoff district berth, and JV carried the season with only one district loss. What wasn't apparent to most was the physical immaturity of the head coach. Our hitting machine was sitting idle and in need of an overhaul. Our coach used $8,000 in vertical raised donations to secure a charter bus from Prosper to an optional varsity tournament in Houston. A PISD bus and coach's driver was an alternative. The Booster Club unanimously objected, and they were ignored. The large amount of money was spent with no accountability. The season seemed to run consistently the same way and ended with a resignation. The latest situation with replacement coaches is shock, but the poor leadership trend has already been established. The program had more character issues last year than ever before, and there are still many questions where the administration failed the parents and players by lack of communication and oversight, to be continued. Still, we know that PISD is capable of investing in local high school softball. Walnut Grove is open with its state-of-the-art fungo machine, which is easily valued over $17,000. That advertisement says it's like having another coach on the field. Our team has none. I humbly ask you to consider what these student athletes are undergoing right now and change course. In closing, this Wednesday, the team will participate in homecoming parade with no coaching staff. Many of the younger players questioning their future. After many years of preparation, the senior class will eventually welcome their fourth head coach, also knowing their value, or also question their value because they know what this program once was. Now, these arguments, arguments I make are to diminish the coaches who have dedicated countless hours in a thankless job, but we need to turn the focus back to investing in the program and quit leading on performance alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let's see here. Do we have item 13?
Yes, superintendent report.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so, uh, goal one, innovative learning, our back-to-school video, so, just to take. Go ahead. Our start to the school year, certainly opening four campuses, a lot of heavy lifting by a lot of individuals in order to make sure that those facilities were open and ready to go, and then all of our existing facilities. As most things are going, uh, the heat is playing a huge role. And so a big shout out to our maintenance department in really trying to stay abreast and on top of all things that are happening within each of our facilities, no matter what their age are. So just wanted to share that because certainly a joyous day as we began. And then our new campuses that opened, there's Ms. Dixon there with Ms. Calhoun, and we were able to go through that facility with her and really give her that first glance. And then Effie Christie and her daughter Dylan being able to have that moment with them at Christie Elementary was a pretty special moment when we went into the library and she saw her dad's pictures and then his bio on the wall. It was pretty touching. And I love that the librarian at Christie has made it so that the shelves for the biography section sits right next to Dan Christie's bio wall, and he's gonna utilize that as an introduction to biographies and then incorporate the story of Dan Christie into his teaching, which I thought was really special. And then our Liliana Legends, I was there actually this morning, and they are rolling and doing a great job out there. A lot of happy kiddos. And then Walnut Grove, as you know, has got numerous looks for the beautiful design that it is. And we're very proud of each of these new facilities and certainly bringing on more new facilities. And then the hopes of being able to renovate our existing facilities with the bond that you all called last week. And then for our meet the teams, so we had Rock Hill High School, meet the Blue Hogs, meet the Eagles for all of our fall sports, and then meet the Wildcats. And so those are always glorious events and really exciting for our kids to be able to connect and reconnect, our families to be able to reconnect with one another. A pretty big moment for Walnut Grove High School, though, this past Friday, Mr. Beavers and I made the jaunt to Arkansas for the game. And uh, we actually were able to meet with the president of Wichita Baptist University, really to go on a recruiting mission. So he and I were able to sit down with him and talk about our teachers, or his teachers, and invite them to come to Prosper and roll out the red carpet in hopes of recruiting them to our grade school district. Um, and the icing on the cake was that our kids did an incredible job. Malvern is the 4A state champion in the state of Arkansas, and our Wildcats won the game against this team. And I think it was very unexpected. But what I love about our kids and even talking to Coach Moore, but also Coach Wilkinson at Rock Hill High School today, our kids don't quit. So this first score may happen, there may be a touchdown, but our kids don't give up. They've, they've been taught a high level of just determination and resiliency, and it shows each and every time when they're out on the field. Drill team, the band, it just runs the gamut. Our athletic trainers that are students, the mascot, it's just next level. And so very, very proud of each of our kids. But shout out to Coach Little and all that she does in order to make sure that these great programs are offered to our students and that we have these opportunities. We wouldn't have been able to play at Wichita Baptist had it not been for her and Coach Sane coordinating all of that. And that was a great experience for our kids to be able to go on a college visit while also playing a football game. And so it's a pretty big moment for them. It was a long drive. And so, it's a pretty big moment for them. It was a long drive.
It was a very long drive.
Especially for those who decided to drive up there and then drive back.
In the same day, yeah. They're also serious about their bugs in Arkansas.
Yes.
They're not messing around with those bad boys.
They don't mess around with humidity.
No, no, no.
It's heavy, so. So, we're excited to be able to see all of our fall sports and all of our students excelling at a high level. We've got Walnut Grove, excuse me, on Thursday night and then Friday night, we have PHS homecoming. And then our Rock Hill High School will be playing Keller Timberlake at their place, not ours. And we certainly don't want to leave out our great performing arts. So, for four consecutive years, District of Distinction for the Texas Art Education Association, super proud of these students. And they don't always get the highlight that they deserve. But if you ever get a chance to be able to see just the incredible artwork that our students produce, it just, it's mind-blowing when you think about what they can do and the many talents that they have. I hope that when we go on our instructional walks, that we can stop by art at the elementary, middle, and high school level. I know that we've done that before in the past and I think that we certainly need to stop by and be able to give those art teachers credit where credit is due because they do go above and beyond a lot of hours. And they go traveling too with their students down to Austin or wherever that next competition is. We have many students that achieve at high levels and certainly go on to college to be able to explore their passions. And that's all because of great educators in this district who inspire them.
See, we have an art teacher sitting out there. Thank you. Good job.
Yes, we have a former art teacher sitting next to her, turned administrator, so. Great stuff.
Okay, we will now go into a closed session. Let's see here, I will read the forward, private consultation with board's attorney, deliberation regarding real property, deliberation regarding personnel, including hiring contracts of personnel, and deliberation regarding security, personnel, and other devices. So, we, the time is now 8:33 PM and then we will be back out in open session soon as we're done to take any action. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. It is now 9:59 and we are back in session. Let's see here, last part that we have is a consideration and possible action regarding hiring of contract personnel. Is there a motion?
I make a motion. We approve hiring of contract personnel per administration recommendation.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think Mr. Cavender had that just slightly. Okay, all in favor? That is all six of us. Okay, the time is now 10:00 PM even and we are done. Thank you very much for joining us. Y'all have a good evening.